At night, it'd get up to about seven.
Hey, welcome back, everybody. We're at our ten thirty agenda items. These are all action items. The first one is to sign the real property status report SF four twenty-nine for the Epstein Bridge. And Doug is gonna report for Mackenzie.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Commissioners, I apologize. Kinsey is out ill today. So I'll be presenting on her behalf. And if we do have any questions, she said she would be available. If there are questions that are asked that I am unable to answer. But the first one on the agenda is the real property status report for the Epstein Bridge. It's a requirement for us to provide this to the federal government.
Well, this is a total of requests of sixty-one thousand nine fifty-three sixty. Is that correct?
Let me just verify.
Last page. Or is this a request for the forty-six five fifty?
I got the wrong one here. I don't know if it's it's a request. I think it's just a it provides them with an update.
Of what we've spent so far?
No.
I don't get that, because we spent more than sixty-one thousand.
Well, this shows federal share, non-federal share, and the total. Real property costs.
Chairman, I think I'm gonna have to contact her on this one, because I don't know how to respond to the questions that are asked. So if you.
Bill's an application for federal assistance SF four-two-four. New application. For the Epstein Bridge.
What I'm looking at is yellow pine.
Let me see if I can get on this speakerphone.
Probably the same thing.
Yours look like this new. Let's see next page. Mine's different from that.
Hi, Kinsey. This is Doug. I apologize. I have you on speakerphone. And then the commissioners have some questions on the first one, which is the real property status report for the Epstein Bridge.
So, Mackenzie, is this just a request for reimbursement?
No, it's just an annual or it's not. It's every other year an update they request. I'm not really sure why. It's just a report kind of thing. It's not a request for reimbursement or anything.
Okay. So the total of sixty-one thousand nine fifty-three.
Chairman, this is this one.
Oh, I got the wrong one?
One that says non-construction programs? There's one that doesn't have an amount on it at all.
That's the one that is being presented right now.
Okay.
Oh, shoot.
This is just, you know, an authorization statement. We're gonna abide by all of their.
Yep.
Rules.
Okay.
Is that with the feds or the state?
With the feds.
So this is just an update on the current project for Epstein Bridge, if I read this.
Non-construction programs.
Shoot. Which one is it?
In your packet, I believe it's the one that's titled Real Property Status Report SF four twenty-nine.
Yep. So I'm assuming we just approve this report and sign it, and then Mackenzie will send it in. Is that correct? So I'll make the motion in that we sign the real property status report SF four twenty-nine for the Epstein Bridge. Do I have a second?
A second.
And move in second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Yeah, that's the one I'm looking at.
The one that's got a million two on it.
Yep. Yeah, I figured out where to sign it. I guess it's.
Didn't find the one that pays.
There's two of them you can't open. Gotta do it specially to get them open. You're gonna get an air code on them.
Well, that's one I need an air code.
Okay, the next one is the Idaho Department of Land's West Hazard Reimbursement Request.
These are on the wildfire mitigation programs.
That's correct, Commissioner Moplin. These are for the wildfire hazard.
And some of these are go clear back to twenty-twos. This is just like a a report of all of us?
This is to get our actual reimburse.
So why are we getting twenty-two bills now?
We've already paid them, Mr. Chairman.
Oh.
So the all of these claims have already been paid. Now we're just requesting our reimbursement through the state.
Reimbursement, got it. And we have invoices. So I need to entertain a motion to approve this.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we sign the Idaho Department of Land's West Hazard Reimbursement Request.
I can move it in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And this one, our initial award was two hundred and twenty thousand. This is twenty-six thousand two hundred, but I couldn't see that we had requested a bunch more on this one yet. I think West Hazard is the new one. Yeah. The jug, we're kind of almost finalized on that one.
Okay, so was that a motion?
And then, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the reimbursement request for the Department of Lands on the jug project.
Second. Move the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So that one looks like we only have like sixteen thousand dollars left. More close to that, fifteen thousand. The jug must be done.
I think it is done.
Really close to be done.
Where the hell do we sign it? It's there. Okay, our next agenda item is to sign the application for federal assistance SF four twenty-four.
And this is the one that's sixty-one thousand nine fifty-three sixty.
I'm saying, please wait. What's the deal?
So that's that's where you can't open them. You have to do it specially.
Um. Lift my leg and push my left arm up.
You gotta save them to your desktop and then open them with a Adobe Reader. It's what they're what this one is sixty-one thousand nine fifty-three sixty.
Yeah, that's this one. Help me show.
Yeah.
Okay. It's the assurance, sign assurance. Yep, approve.
There's one is the application.
Oh.
And one is the assurances, which tells them that we're gonna be following all their silly guidelines they put out there.
Commissioners, the chairman has that document that's been printed off.
So the first one is the application, and then the second one would be the assurances. So I'd entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion that we sign the application for federal assistance SF four twenty-four. And do you wanna make do the both of them together?
Um, we probably should do them separate.
Okay.
Oh, I will second the first motion.
We had a motion in a second to sign the application for federal assistance SF four-two-four. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. The next one now is the assurance for the same form.
Make motion to sign assurances on SF four twenty-four.
A second.
Got a motion in a second to sign the assurance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mackenzie, this is the building resilient infrastructure in communities. So is this our all-hazard mitigation plan?
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me. Um, so we have a match on that of fifteen thousand four oh three sixty. And then federal is forty-six thousand five hundred and fifty. Go get better.
I know. Have no fun.
Sound terrible.
I think that's all we need you for.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
All right. Thank you.
Bye.
Make sure we get all these done. Did I did you make a motion, Cherry, on the immigrant?
Second.
And do we have those, Doug?
You have signed those, Mr. Chairman. Those are.
I don't see where that is. I got the FEMA thing on here.
Duplicated that one, didn't we?
The multi-hazard mitigation plan is the one that's the sixty-one thousand nine fifty-three sixty.
I think we just had them on the agenda twice.
Good.
Huh, it doesn't come up on any of that. Comes up. FEMA, but that's only FEMA.
We good on that?
Interesting.
So can we move on? Do you wanna wait till eleven?
Um, I think we probably could move on, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, our next agenda item, which is scheduled for eleven, is an action item. This is to approve the annual street financial report for fiscal year twenty-three. Jeff, come on up.
Oh, you started a little early.
We're early today. We're.
Lucky. We're hoping it snows and you gotta go plow.
Sounds like you're getting some help, though.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good news.
We got another guy. Hope Mike can get him going next week, so.
Cat says the East Fork Road needs to be bladed. There's rocks and snow slid down.
Always does every year. People live in the back country. They gotta deal with a little bit.
Didn't you say that it was a guy back there now that's gonna take care of that?
Yeah, I'm still working with him a little bit.
At East Fork?
East Fork, yeah. There's always rocks come down, because it's on the it's on the north side of the river, so this it warms up there. Always rocks. I sent Cecil down yesterday with his tobacco to move some out of the way, but those people deal with it back there. There's a probably a couple complainers back there that.
You said it's a little scary getting around the rock slide, because you're on the riverside going around.
Yeah, but usually if it's not a safety issue, if the rock's on a straight stretch and Cecil has to take his tobacco ten miles, like just just leave it. People know it's there. They can go around it. But blind corners, and if it's pushing people close to the edge, we'll go clean them up.
Yep.
You can't do it with a plow truck, because they're frozen down, so you gotta take tobacco down there and.
Get them out of there.
Pop them. Otherwise, you end up breaking something. I'm ready. Start asking questions.
Um.
So our income stream is good right now. Um, with all of the funding that's coming in, I'm seeing you're putting five million into your emergency fund. Is that the?
Two million. That was road advisory board stuff.
Line sixty-six shows five million is retained for general funds and operations. Point two six five is.
Line fifty-six is redemption notes.
No.
Sixty-six.
Sixty-sixty-six.
Sixty-six is five million. Taken for general funds and operations.
Oh.
Page four.
Yeah, so to run bare bones in the road department, we're a little over four million. That's patching, plowing, that's not doing any paving, chip sealing, nothing. And then the road advisory board, we need two million in reserves for emergency purposes.
Jeff, the question I had is the three on the very where is it? Three point three million five hundred and fifty-two. That's the gas tax, I'm assuming, this highway user revenue. Has that gone up quite a bit?
You're on the front, yeah. So line twelve.
Line twelve, yeah.
That's a number that we got from Doug.
Two and a half million.
There was an additional bill that was passed to increase the amount of funding.
Oh.
Through the user fees.
So that's gone up?
It's gone up.
Well, it cost a million bucks, looks like.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Question, though, is that is that going to be sustainable and continued, I think? And that is dependent on the sales tax that's collected by the by the state. Commissioners, correct me if I'm wrong.
Now, that's that bucket of money that the state took eighty million and backed all of the bonds. And then everything else on top of that, up to a hundred and twenty million, will go back to the counties in the future. So it's whether they want to remit on that extra funding, but you know, hopefully that was a solid commitment.
But was that funding that was from the surplus?
Was not the surplus, no.
Okay, my apologies then for incorrectly stating that.
What what they did was they capped it at a hundred and twenty, because supposedly it was whatever surplus there is would continue to grow. And then they said, no, we're gonna cap it at one twenty. So these funding should be secure moving forward.
So that's you're talking about the fuel fuel tax? Okay.
Yes.
So the other question, Jeff, is um, can we figure in the eight hundred and some thousand that FEMA owes us? Is that in here somewhere?
This is, no. We don't have it yet.
We haven't collected it yet.
Haven't collected it yet.
If that was collected, yes, we would be accounting for that on line.
And that's gonna be for twenty-four.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Moplin, I would say that we would account for that on line twenty-two.
And that'll be in next times you do this, we'll capture that.
You haven't gotten that yet? Have you heard from them?
Not well. They wanted proof of payment. So when this originally happened in nineteen, all we had to do was give the invoices to FEMA. They paid off of that. Well, now that we're reopening this whole thing, they want proof that we paid the contractors, proof that I worked those months, proof that Mickey worked those months.
So you saved all that, I hope?
Well, we're getting a lot of it from Doug's office. I Mickey's been off for the last two weeks. The FEMA guys have been in and out is, yeah. Hopefully after the first year, when holidays are over, we start getting this done.
So, Jeff, I'm looking at it. So next year, you're looking at a million dollars in chip sealing, eight hundred thousand of overlay, a million in repaving, rebuilding East Side Drive, and then purchasing the right-of-way.
Yeah, the East Side Drive one, a lot of these big ones are gonna be phases, so that purchase right-of-way is in twenty-six. Most of that's gonna probably be for farm-to-market or wherever we need to start working on these.
Oh, so that's not right-of-way for East Side Drive?
No.
No, no, the the right-of-way purchase is just kind of wherever we I'm gonna I'm meeting with Cody Jansen from Parametrics next week. We're gonna get together and merge the I-Works stuff that I had done a couple of years ago with the new transportation plan, and we're gonna we're gonna work on a plan to for the next five years, probably.
But didn't you say here you had to buy some right-of-way on East Side Drive?
East Side Drive's all easement. We don't own right-of-way anywhere out there.
So who's gonna be? What is your plan on chip sealing, repaving, and overlay? Is that gonna be you?
No, that's the million's gonna be I'm I'm trying to keep that million dollars going every year. The I mean, that should kind of help show the taxpayers that's what, you know, whenever we decide to go for a levy again, that hey, you know what? To keep this thing moving the way it is with the chip sealing, the repaving of the old asphalt, rebuilding of roads, this is what it's gonna cost.
So but you're gonna count on third party for those? So you're putting.
Yeah, so some of the smaller smaller local roads, we will take care of. But I think all the main collectors and stuff, I'm gonna contract that stuff out.
Okay. So do you have a plan yet for us on what you're which roads you're identifying for next year?
I've got the chip seal one kind of figured out, and that's why I wanna meet with Cody, because I don't wanna we got the new transportation plan that's got stuff lined out in that. I-Works has given us recommendations on what roads need chip sealed, paved.
Okay.
And I've got to merge the two, and I'm it's I need some help, so I asked.
Good.
The other question I had, Jeff, is on the Valdez pit that what was a twelve thousand dollar lease that we pay? Do we get that reimbursed from the Forest Service?
No.
Because we don't have anything left in that pit. This is all Forest Service.
No, it's the Forest Service. So to access that four point nine acres of Forest Service, we had to go through the Valdez pit. There's no other access into it. So everything we crushed out of the Boise National Forest is stored now in the Valdez pit. That's what we're paying for.
And we're but we're using that material on our roads and Forest Service roads.
Next year, if if FEMA and everything would have worked, it most of it would have been out of there this year. Because it's gonna go on the East Fork up towards Stibnite and the mitigation up Profile Creek. That's gonna eat up dang near everything we got back there.
I just thought, you know, that almost felt like a reimbursable expense to the Forest Service.
No.
Because it's their rock we're storing.
It's ours. It's ours, but we can't use it on anything except for approved Forest Service.
Forest Service.
For the roads back there. And I can't just go in there and grab ten truckloads and go put it somewhere if I think that's where it needs it. I gotta get permission to go put it out.
Hey, any more questions?
The seven hundred and four thousand nine sixty-one on heavy equipment purchase. Is that?
That's how much we that's how much we spent. That's.
This year.
Everything is what we spent in twenty-three, except for that very last page.
Okay.
So you're good?
Yeah, I'm I'm questioning, Jeff, the four million dollar number, just to make, you know, the.
We're at we're at.
Well, just your comment, it takes about four million dollars to keep the road department going. But really, your your costs, your salaries, your that kind of stuff's about two point five.
We got two point five in wages and benefits. And then to keep the lights on and do minor stuff, we're
We're about a million five.
Four and a half million.
Okay, there's no other questions. I'd entertain a motion to approve the street report.
I'll make a motion that we approve the annual street financial report fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
A second, Doc.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
You want this one or is Doug?
I had my staff print one off just right now, because I apologize. I didn't know if you had brought one or not.
Oh, I had to have something. I wrote last year's too, in case we wanted to compare.
If you can, if you wanna bring that one up, we just remember this is the first year. We have to submit it electronically. So I don't know how if if I can I'll scan and email it, or I don't know if they want the chairman to sign the document electronically or not. So once I prepare, let's get their signatures, and then this afternoon, when I submit it, I will work through the actual document, how they want it.
So it's all three of us signing here, then you fill in out all the rest?
Yeah.
Well, this is different.
No, this is the first year, though. We have to submit it electronically, so I don't know.
So we would sign here?
It's right here. Yeah.
Yeah, so what I'm gonna do is just.
Here's the blue pen.
I don't know. We'll figure it out.
Jeff?
We'll figure it out.
I didn't I didn't see anything on the bridge stuff where you're putting in the S-Bridge. Put it on there.
You didn't see that thirty-seven million dollar number in there anymore?
No, I didn't see that.
It's only down to thirty-seven million?
It's not a laughing matter, gentlemen.
I just it scares me to death thinking of the marina going out there with all those boat trailers.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
How many people can't keep their cars away from those curves, let alone trailer tires?
Trailer tires, yeah. That's why they put a new bridge over the salmon, because it was so sharp.
Yeah, I didn't see the dollar amount on that one, but I bet it was
Oh.
Quite close to thirty million.
I bet it was up there. You know, can you take that deck off and use the abutments? Keep the old abutments and set a new deck on now?
Well, we gotta lighten it. That's the problem.
We'll just hang it out a little bit more.
I would think an engineer needs to be.
That was put in the fifties, so I'm sure those are pretty shallow, shallow piers, shallow everything.
Yeah, I could probably watch that, though. Like we got her.
It seems that's sent off on everybody. They're sending a copy of the other.
I I will. I'll scan it in. I'll email it in, and I can assure you that either this afternoon or tomorrow morning, I will submit this to the state.
No, no, get it away from me!
No! That's our all covered.
Oh, jeez.
This is the department. Does anybody got any questions about what's what we're doing or where we're at or anything?
Is that? I missed that.
This is department head, so you wanna.
Well, we didn't actually have you on, but yeah, so go ahead and give us an update.
I mean, we're just.
What are the guys working on? I stopped in at Lake Fork. They said they were.
So everybody.
Trying to keep up.
We're missing five guys today that are out sick.
Oh, five?
They they've been, yeah, I got another guy that I tried to send home today, and he's he's working with the crew, but they're outside, so we're brushing up on one wagon. We got a big we got both chippers running up there and chainsaws and getting a bunch of these little trees out of the way, limbs, mire slappers. We've got got the new road grader paperwork all done. Now, the next one is I've got two Peterbilt trucks sitting down in Boise. One's ready to come out of the shop. I asked them to send me a sample of their municipal lease. And Arnie instantly, between Arnie and Brian, is like, nope, nope.
Not gonna work.
So I sent it back, and I said, you gotta make this work for us. This is what we need. I haven't heard back. I go, figure it's two hundred and sixty thousand dollar truck. I got a ten-wheeler sitting down there too that getting ready to start in the shop. So.
Wow.
Arnie actually asked me if I could buy the trucks through Western States, because their agreement was perfect.
Well, maybe send them that that agreement, and then they can use it. This is what? Peterbilt?
Peterbilt. Jack it's called Jackson Group. Pacar. They're going through Pacar Finance, and it says right on the top, government municipal lease. And I was like, oh, cool, here it is. Doesn't even have the boycotting Israel or the ownership of China clauses in it. And it's like, oh, boy, here we go.
Yeah.
But it went back to them last week. I haven't heard anything. I go, I hope you guys can figure this out, because I don't have this much money in cash to pay for this truck.
And you have a sweep plow for it once you get it up here? Does that include the plow too?
Yeah.
Okay.
It it probably won't even go into service this year, because we've still gotta run it through our shop and get radios in it and our spotlights and.
Is these these rigs gonna have that tracking thing in them?
Of what?
The Verizon?
Verizon trackers?
Well, that's something else I'm working with Jeremy. Oh, okay, so I'll give you an update on that. Talked to Jeremy probably about a month ago. I didn't even know it was an option when we were getting these to have a GPS-only tracker. Doesn't go through the cell service. It goes off a satellite. Does not plug into your OBD port, does not plug into your nine-pin diagnostic port in our equipment. And that's what's messing us up on all of our equipment. They plug their Huda into our nine port, and all of a sudden, check engine lights are blowing off, and we're getting
Oh, great day.
We're getting ten emails a day off of one road grader and saying this and that and.
Well, you can buy them with GPS ready.
Yep, and that's all it is, is just a GPS thing. So I I don't know where Jeremy is on that. He's eventually gonna swap them all out. I go, I didn't even know that was an option when we were doing this. Otherwise, I mean, we don't need diagnostics sent to our computer. We just need to be able to do the tracking thing for the public for our snow plows. That was main reason why we did it.
Yeah. And then I'm assuming if one goes haywire, you just put another one in.
Uh huh.
You guys can do it yourself and not have to wait for Verizon to fly up here and do it.
Jeremy said it just he did them at the mine. He did both different types at the mine, and he goes, yeah, you don't plug those into the diagnostic ports. You just find a power source that's powered with the key and.
That's all you need. Yeah.
All you need. But nobody even said those were an option when.
So then you have the computer program by your office that you can follow these, and then you'll delay that information twelve hours or something before it goes out to public? Is that?
No, it it'll be right within ten minutes.
Okay.
I mean, that that's the idea behind it, is so the Jesus, nine o'clock, I haven't seen my plow truck or whatever, and they can get on the computer and go, oh, it's been sitting there for the last hour and a half. Well, they're gonna call and it's broke down. Why hasn't my road been plowed? I can say, well, follow this this numbers and see where he went from here to over there, because we had a truck get stuck, and he had to re-histack to go get him, and all this stuff was it scared me at first, thinking it's gonna make more phone calls. It does at first, but then when people start figuring it out, I'm pretty sure the phone calls have went down.
Good, good.
So we still got.
Put some in the loop on that one. I think that's great.
Other than that, we're just waiting for snow.
I stopped to introduce myself to your team in Lake Fork of Thursday. I stopped to introduce myself to your team in Lake Fork of Thursday, yeah, Thursday. That was fun.
Did you surprise them?
I did.
Oh, good. Were they doing anything?
They what?
Were they doing anything?
Uh, one was driving in, so it was kinda late in the day, it was like three o'clock.
They were probably tying things up.
Yep.
It's funny, cause sometimes you go in early, you walk in there and you look around, and all of a sudden, they're all gone.
Yep. Um, I did, so the new shop thing, I talked to Dana this morning, we've been playing phone tag the last two weeks, he's been off for holidays, and when he calls the office, I'm not there, so I talked to him for about a half hour this morning, and we're trying to get, he's doing the CUP. Cause I did my version of the CUP, and Sinda laughed me out of her office. Cause I'm, I'm not an engineer, I don't write like an engineer, under the lighting plan, I put we'll abide by all Valley County lighting ordinances, that's all I put. Landscaping, not planning on landscaping, and he goes, nope, you gotta have landscaping, and I was like, huh. She goes, you need to hire somebody to do this for you, so. Dana's gonna do it, um, I'm gonna send him everything I got. I didn't know the septic application through CDH was like it was, I thought I could just call them and they could meet me on site, tell me to dig these holes. Well, they said, well, you haven't turned it, where's your application? It's like, what application? Fill out the application, send it in, next day she goes, we didn't see a payment come through. I go, oh, we gotta pay for this? So it's not gonna get paid till the eighth, or whenever it is, so.
But, how much was it, Jeff? Seven fifty?
Eight hundred and something.
Oh, it's a hundred and something?
Eight hundred.
Yeah.
Just to dig the holes, just to dig the test holes and monitor, and.
Go come out and look at the dirt.
Huh?
Go come out and look at the dirt and the bottom of that, and I'll tell you pretty quick.
I've, I've got three spots out there kinda picked where it'll drain good, without going into the groundwater, so. It's, it's moving.
Um, have you fired up the new blade yet?
Not since paperwork's gotten done.
Now, you're ready to go in and want snow, this is so unfair.
Probably dead now. No, every, everything's good, uh, things are, since COVID, things are starting to happen a little bit faster out there when you're ordering stuff. Still waiting on jail transport van is still, sounds like it's gonna go into production in January. We'll probably have it in March, April. Do we department pick up F-five-fifty for the shop, and other than that, they're all caught up.
And then we bought, there's department a car this morning, you saw that?
Yep.
And I was like concerned, I thought, well, why isn't this going through Motor Pool, but they're gonna use Cascade City funds to buy this car.
Still a motor pool vehicle, but that's something else we need to talk about is the buying of these vehicles.
Yes, I agree.
I mean, me and Dave have talked, kinda, but this is more of a you guys' decision.
Well, and I think there's probably some vehicles around here that maybe we need to surplus, they've been sitting there a long time.
Have you guys ever? I surplus them when they show up in my yard.
Have you guys ever purchased any leased vehicles? I mean, most leased, they'll go to thirty thousand miles, and then they trade them in.
So, so you can talk to Elton Cherry about our leasing deal we tried a few years ago. It put us so far behind with the nagling we were doing, and this and that, and then all of a sudden, instead of four cop cars, we needed eight, because it put us
Yep.
that much farther, and.
Oh, really?
We did talk about it, um, talked about it on the motor pool vehicles even, but we don't even come close to putting thirty thousand miles on them in seven years.
Really?
Seven or eight years, cause they just.
Some of them, others, we put a lot more on.
Yeah, and then some of the patrol deputies are putting twenty-five thousand miles a year on theirs.
Sure, sure.
And I think this car that Dave bought was a lease return. That's why we got such a good buy.
So it was a leased pursuit vehicle.
It wasn't new.
Or used, but at the time, it was a pursuit rated vehicle that got, the lease got turned back in. I think certain ones would probably be fine with that, but, I mean, it's, Dave loves his ERS guy down in Nampa, but.
No, he's saying he's in.
You, you can lease the radars, and the gun holders, and the consoles, and the don't worry about it. But yeah, we, we talked about it. Okay, I, if we've got the money, it's just easy just to buy the, just to buy them.
Sure. If they're available.
If they're available, I mean, luckily with these eight patrol vehicles we bought last year, or two years ago, or whenever it was.
Last year.
The guys in Utah seen this COVID short, shortfall of vehicles, so he bought a whole bunch of pursuit rated Durangos, and luckily Dave found them on the internet or something.
Wow.
Yep.
So, other than that, Tony's pickup went up to Western Collision in McCall this morning, sixteen hundred dollars worth of damage, I don't know if Doug told you or not, but, um, it's way under our insurance deductible, so I didn't even really wanna come up and look at it. It was a simple, you could tell it was probably a, it was a slide sideways into a tree in the mud. It was just, he wasn't even really moving, he was just backing up, and the pickup just kinda went knocked the mirror off and dented the front fender, and sixteen hundred bucks.
That's really, I thought, pretty reasonable.
What's that?
He needs studs on his truck.
He was, he was in the mud.
Mud, studs wouldn't help that.
Thing that would've helped him was chains. But, other than that, we're, we're just gonna pay for it out of the motor pool repair line item, and be done with it, and that way he can have it back.
Well, keep us in the loop on these Peterbills, cause that's important too.
Oh, that's definitely, yeah, it's kinda caught me off guard when I, I thought it was gonna be easy when they sent me that sample document, municipal government, and yeah, it came back pretty quick from Arnie.
This won't work.
This won't work, okay.
Okay.
Thanks, folks.
Have a safe day.
We do the commissioner discussion stuff?
Wanna move down to do commissioner? That'll right with you, Doug? Okay, well, we're gonna move, we're gonna skip our eleven-thirty, and move to our eleven-forty-five agenda item, these are all action items, and the first one is the meeting minutes of December eighteenth.
Chairman, I move that we approve the meeting minutes of December eighteenth.
Second. You got a motion and a second to approve the December eighteen minutes, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, and then in your packet, I believe it's down towards the very bottom, is the Upper Paya Water User Association amendment, what do you call it, Doug? Kind of a redo of that original agreement?
Just added the verbiage to allow a consultant in there.
Yeah.
Cause we were paying a gentleman that's a consultant, not an attorney, and we had originally written it, that it was reimbursed to attorneys.
Yeah.
That was the only thing that was changed.
So this is for Ron?
Yeah.
Yep.
Mister Chairman, I will move that we sign the amended agreement with the Upper Paya Water User Association.
One second, second, motion and a second to approve the Upper Paya Water Use Association, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And all three of us sign that one. Okay, the next one is this is resolution twenty-four oh-five, and this is, I believe, something we kinda do every year for the nine-one-one fees.
That's correct, the nine-one-one fund, uh, we move a portion of those funds that are allowed uh, to the general fund. It is found under Idaho Code thirty-one forty-eight oh-three.
So Doug, are we moving the thirty-nine six sixty-one, or the one?
One hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents, from the nine-one-one trust fund to the general fund.
Everybody understand what's going on? If so, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
You have any questions, Neil? You haven't had to do this before.
Yeah, so, nine-one-one trust fund collected two, and where's that coming from?
It's coming from, it's coming from fees, uh.
On phones.
You look at the, um, the whereas number three, telecommunications providers have collected and remitted in emergency communications fees to Valley County from its customers from within the nine-one-one service area for the purpose of funding the lease, purchase, or maintenance of emergency equipment for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, so it's a fee that the telecommunications providers are assessed.
Okay.
And that funds are turned over to us, we put them in, uh, the nine-one-one trust fund, and and then at the end of the year, uh, based on Idaho Code thirty-one dash four eight oh-three, there are specific requirements that we have to follow in order to move those funds from that fund to the general fund to assist with the cost of the nine-one-one center.
So it still goes back to the nine-one-one, it just, it allows us to move to the general fund?
We pay nine-one-one at, or dispatch out of the general fund, and the breakdown of those costs that are eligible are on the second page.
Okay, okay.
So, we got a.
The allowable reimbursements are, what is allowable under Idaho Code thirty-one dash four eight oh-three?
Mister Chairman, I would move that we approve resolution number twenty-four oh-five, transferring of the nine-one-one trust funds.
I got, we got a motion and a second. Everybody understands, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Yeah, that was just something new I hadn't, unaware of. Like everything else I get every week.
This, we only do once a year, so I wanna make sure that we don't approve something you don't understand.
About the learning curve, oh my goodness.
Yes, there is.
Okay, and then the last item under commissioner discussion is the fiscal year twenty-three public defense expense report, which is in your packet. And Scott kinda breaks it all out, and we have to approve how this is being spent, I guess.
In his last visit with us, he kinda broke all this out anyway, didn't he?
I don't think we signed this one, then we just approved.
There, I have a document for you guys to sign, and then.
Okay, so I'll make the motion, we approve the fiscal year twenty-three public defense expense report.
A second.
A move and a second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And at this time, we're gonna mute ourselves, and we'll see everyone back here at eleven-thirty.
Flex touch program. With additional cost to Valley County be reimbursed by the city of McCall. Explain to me what flex touches is.
Here's the background on this. Our CAD software has a, a mobile phone component. You can use on a mobile device that gives you statuses and things like that. When we originally implemented the software. We didn't, it was one of the, there was, there were several things that we felt we didn't need that we had taken off when we were implementing the Spielman. Um, system, three, four, five, however long it's been.
Yeah, it's quite a few years back.
Yeah, back when the previous IT director was here. Anyways, there was some, there was some, I don't know, it was, it took a long time to kind of get everything squared away with what we kept, what we took off and. All this kind of stuff. Well, earlier this year, when we got our first sort of official. Bill for the yearly maintenance that we pay. I realized that it never actually gotten taken out, that we were still paying for it. And so, uh, we decided, okay, we got all the. Deputies new phones of the county controls. We can, you know, use those to have them, um, use it. And so we, I, throughout the summer and stuff, I've been sort of working on getting it up and going. And, um, call PD would like to use it, which is fine. They have company owned phones. That's not the issue. The issue is, is that. They have a, their, their MDTs or laptops, they have a license in order to connect to our VPN server to access the system. Well, any phones, I think they said that there's twelve, um, would also need one of these licenses. And so what happened was that over the course of this whole thing, we've also been trying to kind of re, not really renegotiate, but make sure that. All the correct agreements were in place and that they were paying for the things that they're using and things like that. And, and there's some discrepancies there. They're not. But that's being worked on. So since I didn't specifically budget for these, I just wanted to make sure that. Um, McCall PD was paying for what they were using before I went and bought, purchased additional things that we'd have to pay for. If they weren't. And so. I find like, in the last month or so, I finally got Spelman touch like up and running and tested and working and all that kind of stuff. And when I sort of looked into making sure that they were paying whatever they were supposed to be paying for. That whole thing that we've been kind of working on over the last year or two. Still kind of, it's gotten kind of waylaid or whatever. It still hasn't been sort of worked out. So there. Is some questions what they are paying for, what they're not paying for, what they should be paying for, those sorts of things. But I didn't wanna. Or nor do I have the authority, I guess, to just buy things that are gonna go against our budget that weren't budgeted for. And so I kind of told, uh, the McCall PD that, you know, we were working through this. Anyways, what it boils down to is they feel like. We should get this going for them, that the, the negotiations, the background aren't really anything they can do anything about. So they've requested to get on the. For me to go ahead with the negotiations of, of whatever we're paying to, to sort of be worked out.
So in other words, they want to come on now, but we don't have.
But if we do, I mean, it's not a lot of money, but still the budget's the budget, right? So. They want to come on now while these things are still being worked out. But if we do, then however long that takes to work out, that's gonna be extra expense on the. On the county. So I just wanted to make sure. That everybody knew and they got approval. Cause again, I don't want to just, you know, buy things against our budget without there having been a budget, even though it's not.
Who's working it out?
A huge amount of money.
I'm confused.
So it's been kind of between, uh. Uh, Clerk Miller, myself, uh, the sheriff's office, sheriff, the previous sheriff, Patty Bullen before. So it's just been, and, and on, on, and with. And with the PA's office through, uh, Mr. Oki. Is where it's kind of been kind of. Jostling around through, um, with the change of the sheriff and everything's going on. It's just one of those things, just kind of. Kept getting put to the side or, or, or whatever. And there were some things that we were. Unsure about, um, that we had to work through as well. So it's just been a lot of things that.
So I guess my question maybe is for Doug, if we do this. And there's a cost, we're gonna pay that one out of general fund reserve and then get reimbursed.
We would pay it out of the expense line currently that's being used to fund this program.
Right.
And I want to assure the commissioners that I do have an email from Chief Dallas Palmer. I received on Wednesday, December twentieth that says, as mentioned during our phone call, McCall Police Department will cover the cost. Of the additional VPN license purchased by Valley County. For McCall Police Department owned cell phone devices for the purposes of the flex touch software. So they have agreed.
So you're talking about twelve licenses, cause there are twelve phones? Can you give me a rough guess on cost?
Yeah, they're, uh, eight. Eight dollars and sixty six dollars each per month.
Eight dollars and sixty six.
City of McCall pick up some of that?
I'm sorry?
City of McCall pick up?
They, they will.
Yeah, they need to.
That they will pay for what it, it's costing us. And I think the problem is, is we have this, uh, agreement with Verizon, right? Or it's, is it Verizon or who are we currently paying for this product? The connection?
Yes, the VPN software that we use is a company that is owned by Verizon Wireless.
And since, can you explain this? So I don't, uh, mess it up. The existing VPN connections that we have are with Valley County. Correct? That McCall PD is using to access the Spielman product.
Yes.
That agreement is with. For those licenses currently is with Valley County. To add new equipment that has to be at this point in time with the Valley County. McCall PD does not have the ability, or have we determined if they have the ability? To go to Verizon to get those VPN connections?
No, because, because we own the physical server and the licenses we would be purchased against our server. Um, it would, they, they would have to be purchased against our account anyways. And I don't know if. Verizon would let somebody else buy something against our account. I don't know if we'd want to.
To be a reimbursement thing from them to us.
Correct.
Right.
But we just invoice them every month.
Correct.
Which we're not doing now. I just wanted to make sure before I did this, everybody was aware that this needs to happen and that. Everybody was covered before we did it. And while these agreements are being worked out, we're gonna have to pay those costs until they start picking it up.
Sure, sure, got it.
Well, I think it's important that we do eventually get an agreement.
Absolutely.
You know, an MOU or whatever, but if I figure this right, it's a little under twelve hundred a year.
Yeah.
So we're not like, it's not a bank buster.
Right, yeah, it's not, it's not ten or twenty thousand or anything like that. But again, I didn't, like I said, I didn't want to.
Eleven fifty two is what I got, eight bucks a month.
Heard you didn't decide to just spend money, you know?
Hey, everybody good with this? I'd entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the McCall Police Department request. Access to the flex touch program.
A second.
Here we got a motion, a second to approve the request for an access to flex touch. With a MOU in process.
I'll amend my second. You'll amend your motion.
Yep, yeah, we need the MOU. Okay, we got a motion, second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Whoop, sorry, whoop?
And Jeremy, if I'm correct, then this would allow you to make the contact to Verizon. To get whatever is needed and potentially implement this immediately or by the end of the month?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. We got a motion, a second on favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
So in listening to that story though, this is not the only part of the MOU where they need to be paying for something. There's other product that they have that.
I think they, I think we, we were talking, they've been kind of paying the same amount for a very long time. It hasn't. Changed much. So I think that, uh, Clerk Miller wanted to sort of look at and renegotiate. Everything. And I think McCall PD had also requested, which is a reasonable request, because this is something else that sounds like hadn't been. Done in the past, which is actually list out everything that the monies that they're paying us are, are being paid for, I guess. So. So I think, I think the, the goal is to renegotiate or relook at the entire. Not what they're paying for, uh, dispatch services, the whole.
Whole thing. I think that's awesome. Yeah, hardly pretty receptive to the dispatch part, Doug.
Yes, sir. Uh, they, they are.
That took a long time.
Receptive to having a conversation and we have to provide some statistics to show, uh, exactly. What they're paying, what they're getting in return, what services is, in return are they getting? Our costs, I, I think there's a lot that needs to be determined internally to discuss externally. About those entities that are currently using the dispatch services. And I think it's a, a good time to begin. It should have happened a while ago, these type of conversations, but I think we're at a point now where we're. Ready to begin those negotiations.
And don't, I'm assuming here that if we get this data from McCall, we can use it for Cascade?
Cascade fire. Um, I, I don't know if necessarily we're gonna be using it for the Cascade. I guess the statistics could be captured to show how many calls are coming in for police services. For Cascade, but it comes down to fire, it comes down to EMS, it comes down to. All of those entities that are utilizing dispatch.
And they're paying five hundred a year now? Aren't they?
No, it's five thousand, the fire departments are.
Five thousand a year?
Correct.
Okay.
That was one of the questions we need clarification for on this agreement is. Do we also include the, the fire districts in the newly formed EMS as signatories on this, uh, on this agreement? Or is it just specific with McCall for now?
But to me, this phone deal, this agreement, the flexing is just McCall City. The shared dispatch cost should be for all the agencies.
The concept of this agreement was going to be that it was gonna have, uh, certain parts, one, one, one being the VPN access. But there would also be the nine one one dispatch, the nine one one repeater maintenance, uh. And, and so we're gonna break it down by segments and each of these entities are using this. Some are all of these services. And if we can do one agreement with all the entities, or do you want separate ones with? With, with each of the individual fire districts and newly formed EMS. Uh, McCall City and is the agreement with McCall Police or is it with McCall City? We know, if we don't know, we just need to get the details and, and get all that figured out. But we are. Working on putting this agreement together and we have, we'll have questions about. How to get, uh, the details confirmed.
Jeremy, is that gonna be pretty easy to dig that data out? I'm assuming you can figure out how many runs are McCall issued. I mean, I don't know.
For the connections, it's easy. As far as like calls, um, that would have to go through. The sheriff's office and they'd probably have to run some reports against. Um, CAD. But as far as the actual connections used to access our system, um, that, that's, that's easy to figure out. I know exactly how many they're using. on CAD. But as far as the actual connections used to access our system, that, that's, that's easy to figure out. I know exactly how many they're using.
Okay. Okay, I think we're good. Everybody okay? And we were going to sign off and we'll see everyone back here at one o'clock.